Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Butler is absent tonight. Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. McDonald?
Here.
Ms. Rainey?
Present.
Ms. Schulist?
Here.
And Ms. Sinyard?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you will join me for the opening prayer and pledge.
Thank you for joining us here tonight and help us to do the city's business with an open mind and open heart. Remember all of the people of Fairview depend on us for our judgment. Help us guide this fine city into the future. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just for all.
See there, you know what you're doing.
Move to approval of agenda?
Move to approve.
Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
And Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
Move to citizens' comments.
The first one tonight is Mr. Sean Keaton.
Mr. Keaton, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Sean Keaton, I live at 7200 Jones Lane. Do I get a clock to look at, or is it just?
No, she'll raise her hand when you've hit your three minutes.
Okay.
Microphone on and up, there we go.
Is that, is that okay? What I wanted to talk to you tonight about is Agenda Items 5 and 6. This is two plus seven acre parcels on Old Nashville Road that is up for rezoning. What I wanted to bring to your attention is that if we look at the 2040 Plan, there are, the property is split in half, literally, into two different designations. One of them, the south half of the property is in what is called a legacy neighborhood designation, and it says appropriate zoning would be RS40 and R20. The north half is in a transition corridor, and it says it should be RS40. Based on that, Item 5, there, excuse me, Item 6, they're wanting to rezone that tract to RS15. So I would think that would be a no, just based on that's not even in the 2040 Plan. Item 5 is requesting rezoning to R20. So again, you've got part of the property that says it should only be RS40, the other part is saying maybe that's a possibility. I'm obviously here saying vote no on it, but if you were to pass that, I would suggest that the R20 be given an extra limitation that could only be single-family residential. There was some property right next to this that got rezoned about a month ago. I know that was a concern for it, that possibly it just being an R20, it could be, you know, you can still do duplexes. Which is another item, actually, I want, this has nothing to do with that, but I wanted to say that our zoning ordinance, we really need an RS20 district. For some reason, we don't have RS20, we have RS40, we have a 15, a 10, a 8, and a 5, but no RS20. It really seems like that would be appropriate to have an RS20. Just for the fact that you're designating that it could only be single-family, single-residential development. The last thing I wanted to mention before, like I said, there were like three other tracks that did get rezoned about a month ago, and we did, not me, there was another gentleman who's here tonight, conducted a neighborhood survey, and out of his survey, it was overwhelmingly people that were against the property being rezoned. I think he had like 74 no responses out of around 80. So I think, you know, from a, just from the people in the neighborhood, everybody's pretty much against the property being rezoned from what it is now, which is RS40. So, thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you.
Next tonight is Mr. Dan Carnahan.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Dan Carnahan, I live at 7424 Old Nashville Road. I just want to take, first of all, we all have lives to live, and we all have, you know, other things that we're doing in life, so I wanted to take the time out, at least initially, to say thank you for the job that all you guys do here. It's not an easy one per se, especially when we're talking about growth in our, in our city that we're wanting, that we're going through. Nashville's seen a lot of it, and we're starting to see some of it as well. I'm here to talk about, again, the Items 5 and 6 as well. I just have some, some current concerns, I guess, on, you know, I think there should be, in my opinion, more neighborhood input into what's happening, and especially with the one going from, from an R20 to an RS15. I have some concerns about that. Most of the houses, at least where I'm at, on the side of the road I'm in, are at least an R40, I think, oh, R20, excuse me, is kind of what there are today. So I have some concerns about putting more people in an area that we live at right now. I wish, you know, the roads need to be improved. Like I said, the last time I was here, I, my mailbox has been replaced three times, and part of this growth, I can see it being hit more, and I'm having to replace it more. I'm taking my life into my own hands when I do that. The last time I replaced it, a car came this close to hitting me on that road. So, again, it's just, the more traffic you put on that road, the more, you know, incidents you're gonna have, that, you know, we all don't want. So, I think it's, I'm not against growth, don't get me wrong, I am, I just think that we should manage it better, I think, and have more feedback. Like, to me, I can only, I can only say what I feel today. I think we need a dialogue. We're all people, we're all adults, and I think we need to, in some way, improve this form that we have. I think it's good, but I think it could be made better, so we can have a back-and-forth conversation about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Joe Scott.
Mr. Scott, will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Joe Scott, 7123 Fernvale Springs Way. So, again, we're here talking about growth and rezoning. So, the last time I was before you, I brought a list of 74 or 75 signatures, all opposed to the rezoning. There were 11 people, I believe, that stood up and spoke very emotionally, opposed to that rezoning. A number of questions were asked, zero questions were answered, and at the end of the hearing, there was a vote taken, and it was unanimous, not a single person on this, on the board that weighed in on that rezoning, voted against that rezoning, all of them voted in favor of it. So I have a suggestion to make respectfully. Currently, those hearings are called public hearings, and my suggestion is, let's be honest, and rename them public ignorings. Because none of the feedback that you got seemed to have any impact. The appearance was that you all had all made up your mind before you heard a single word, and apparently you didn't listen, because from the results of the survey, and from the audience that was in the room that day, all of whom were opposed to it, that seemed to have absolutely no effect on the decision. So, you know, we pledge allegiance to the United States, and we live in a republic, and in a republic, the general concept is, those who are elected to office govern at the behest of the governed, to serve those who are governed. And so, I'm here to respectfully ask you, there's a lot of people in this area, in Fairview, that are elderly, that are on fixed incomes. In my experience in Franklin, and in Brentwood, and in other locations in Middle Tennessee, is that when all of this growth happens, and you have more people in the area, much more densely populated, taxes have to go up. And the reasons taxes have to go up is because you have to, you have to hire more police and more fire, you have to build more fire stations, you have to build more schools, you have to hire more teachers, and that takes a lot of capital investment. You may have to expand the water and sewer, all of the services provided by the city have to be paid for, and the more people you bring into the area, the more of those services that are needed, and a lot of capital expenditures. So, I just want to, for you to sit back and think about all the people who may be displacing.
Your time is up. Your time is up.
Thank you. Just think about the elderly, and let's not put these people out.
Thank you. Okay. Move to approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
And Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Moving to new business, Item 1, PC Resolution, PC-20-22, Annexation of 891 Highway 96 North Project, .755 acres, map 021, parcel 046.05, property owner Walter and Beverly Totti.
The staff report for PC 20-22 through PC-23-22, all will be the same. These three parcels are connected, so the staff report will be the same. The project is 891 Highway 96 North. The applicant is Rob Mulchen with SEC Inc. Mr. Mulchen has submitted to the City of Fairview a request for annexation for 891 Highway 96 North. The property here contains 11.67 acres, and has a mixed zoning of CG Commercial General with a small portion outside of the incorporated city. The applicant is requesting the RM8 Residential Multifamily zoning for the annexed portion as well as the other two lots. The project is located at map 22, parcel 46.05, 46.06, and 46.09, which are along Highway 96 North, across from the Caspian Hills Apartments, northwest of Lake Road. The properties directly surrounding this property, to the northwest-south, are zoned RS40 residential, with additional eastward properties zoned RM8 Residential Multifamily. For the letter of intent, it's we wish to rezone this property from CG to RM8, and then the reason for proposed rezoning, these parcels will be combined to create one property for a townhome development. Mr. Mulchen first introduced this plan for the site as a townhome development, and requested the additional small parcels be annexed into the city. The newly adopted commercial standard zonings do not allow for multifamily developments within the commercial zone districts. The request was adjusted to an RM8 Residential Multifamily zoning for the three parcels, to allow for the additional annexed parcel to be zoned accordingly. SEC Inc. was not required to submit a traffic study, there are no additional staff comments or conditions of approval for these.
Mr. Sullivan, can I clarify on this, since the actual item on the agenda just says annexation, does that Item 1 bring it in as a RM8 all-inclusively, or the separate items bring it in?
For the planning commission, there will be two separate items, one for the annexation, and then one for the zoning. Once it goes to the Board of Commissioners, it will probably be put all into one for that final vote, but from the planning commission, as a request to the BOC, they are two separate items. First will be for the annexation, and then for the zone.
Thank you.
We're gonna approve these one at a time, correct?
Second.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on this item, an applicant? Can you please state your name for the record?
Rob Mulchen, SEC, 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Good evening, thank you all, appreciate being here tonight. I think Mike did a very good job of introducing this property. This is all the Totti property, two properties are already inside the city. Ironically, that little sliver you see on the screen before you, for some reason, at some point in time, when the Totties put the property together, that property wasn't brought into the city, so when we came through with the, looking at the townhome development on this property, we realized that that property wasn't in there, so we needed to ask for the annexation, and then, because the annexation would bring it into the city, the current zoning on the other two parcels, being CG on that side, those are, that's a legacy zoning classification, so we wouldn't be able to make that third track into the same classification as the other tracks. So, as part of that CG classification, townhomes, the RM8 is a baseline representation for the CG, for the multifamily portion on that. So, based on the conversations of Mike and Kevin, that the best thing to do was to go ahead and annex this in, and then more or less transition the other two properties to the RM8, which is already allowable on those other two properties, since we can't use the legacy CG on that side. So, that's what the request is for, in regards to this track and the other two tracks, we're just asking for them all to be rezoned back to RM8, so we can make it one contiguous property with the exact same zoning classification on all three tracks.
Any additional questions or discussion?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we're in a situation here where the, two of the three properties in question are the Commercial General, which means you can put in a residential multifamily development on there, according to the legacy regulations. But a multifamily residential development doesn't fit into our 2040 Plan at all. So, if we were to approve of an RM8 zoning, we are deliberately going against our 2040 comprehensive plan, which has us set as a rural corridor. On the other hand, if we don't do it, then two of the three properties remain Commercial General, and they can use those 11.96 acres, or whatever it was, to build it anyway, and then just not have that one little tiny three-quarter of an acre property to put something on there. So the question becomes, do we want to allow the rezoning, because they could do it anyway with the two larger lots of Commercial General, or do we stick to the 2040 Plan explicitly and say, no, RM8 does not fit into our plans, and we deny that?
Just to be clear, that little .75, that is landlocked by, correct?
Correct, yes, it's landlocked by the properties that are inside the county that it's tied to at this point in time, and the two Totti properties that are asking for the rezoning on the, on the other agenda items coming forth.
Mr. Sullivan, can you clarify, if we approved Agenda Item 1 and annexed it in, but then did not approve Agenda Item 2 for the RM8, what would happen to the property?
By our zoning currently, we have two ways of bringing in an annexed piece of property. One is that it would have a base zone of RS40, which would be a one-acre lot property, and the other allows for the applicant to request a zoning to come along with that annexation. So, with this being the request, if this next item did not pass, it would come in as RS40, which would be 40,000 square foot lots, single-family?
Just to clarify, on Item 1, if this comes in at .755 acres, that's gonna be a non-conforming RS40, so you're gonna have to, if it's annexed, it'll need to be annexed in consideration other than RS40, so wherever that would apply.
So, how big is the rest of the lot, not including the green triangle?
Eleven.
Just shy of 11 acres.
11.67 acres.
So this would add a little less than an acre to the 11.65?
Correct, that's correct.
Any additional questions or discussion on this one?
Yeah, I've got something. I always go to Mr. Jenkins, because he knows the plan, but we shouldn't have to go to Mr. Jenkins all the time. I think the staff ought to put in there if it fits the plan or not, in your comments, for future reference. Okay?
Ms. Johnson, will you take a vote?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
No.
Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
The carries.
Moving to Item 2, PC Resolution, PC-21-22, zoning 891 Highway 96 North Project, .755 acres, map 021, parcel 046.05, current zoning, non-incorporated area, proposed zoning, RM8 Residential Multifamily, property owner Walter and Beverly Totti. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, will you approve? Item PC 21-22.
Second.
Additional questions or discussion?
Okay, just so I know that I know what I know. So at this point in time, this 12, now 12-something acres that's in the city is now RS40?
No ma'am. Currently, the.
C, okay, the CG.
Currently, the two parcels that are within the city limits are CG. The only portion that could be RS40 would be the triangle that is .755 acres, which would then be non-conforming if it is RS40, and if the motion for PC 21-22 passes, it would go to the Board of Commissioners then, for that zone to be the RM8.
Okay, thank you.
Just all food for thought, so this is, sorry, let me pull my notes up here. So it is in the urban growth boundary as a rural corridor, but it is across the street from Caspian Hills, and I believe 96 is wider in that location, is it not? So, it's just something I was thinking about, right? Going off of what Jenkins, Mr. Jenkins brought up, it's CG as it stands. Right now, we would just be creating a big issue, I think, if we leave it the way it is, where we just annexed in that triangle, and if we choose not to rezone it, I think it's just gonna create problems down the road. But that's just my two cents.
Could you, could you repeat what you're saying?
Sure, the gist of it is, I'm just, it's currently CG, so that, as Mr. Jenkins pointed out, they can do what they're wanting to do on the lion's share of that property as it stands, if I understand that correctly. So now, we've landlocked a .75 acre triangle that is gonna be zoned differently, I don't know how that'll all shake out with the situation it's in now, if we chose not to move forward and rezone it. You would initially just island that property as something that would be almost useless. It would be useless.
Speaking of islands, if we were to approve a multifamily residential development right here, if we stick to the plan for the rest of that area that is designated as a rural corridor, then this would be an island of residential development in the middle of a long, eh, a rather long stretch of what should be agricultural, green. When we talk about the rural character of Fairview, and that being one of our mission statements for the city, it's gonna stick out like a sore thumb, if the rest of it is in that rural corridor character.
So am I reading this right, that right now, they could build a multifamily dwelling there? So it's already zoned for that, the CG?
The property surrounding it is, this property is not.
Okay.
That lot is currently wooded, correct?
I believe so.
So, with compromise in mind, as previously stated multiple times, seeing how there's not a lot we could do potentially, if we chose to just fold our hands on this and leave it, they could still do what they want? So is there a potential that we could work with them to maybe retain some of those trees to blend better with the corridor idea and all of that? Is that something that can be done? Are you guys open to that?
I think that could be done as a site plan. I don't think we could require that as a part of the rezoning, certainly.
Well, sure, yeah.
But I don't, my experience with the developers in the, in this group, as they've gone through, is I don't think that'd be any, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I've not heard anything that would be opposed to that. I think it's pretty standard and small for that, for that, that specific area, certainly.
I also want to rephrase and just say, keep that in mind, that we potentially could make changes like that when we get to that point. If we choose to fold our hands and do nothing, then we probably would not have much of a say in that, I'm guessing, so.
Any additional discussion or questions before I go further? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
And Ms. Rainey?
No.
Ms. Sinyard?
No.
Motion failed.
Then should we go ahead and make the opposite motion then? Just, is that how, or do we just move on to the next item?
There's no, there's no other motion to be made, sir.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Moving to new business, Item 3, PC Resolution, PC-22-22, rezoning 891 Highway 96 North Project, six acres, map 021, parcel 046.06, current zoning CG Commercial General, proposed zoning, RM8 Residential Multifamily, property owner Walter and Beverly Totti. Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion for a negative recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for PC Resolution, PC 22-22.
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Nay.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
I'm clarifying, if I vote aye, I'm voting a negative, nay.
And Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
One question for clarification, please. A piece of property that's technically landlocked, right now currently cannot be landlocked, it has to have ingress egress of some kind. You have to, if you own property.
It, that property is landlocked before it came to this board, and I, and both parcels are owned by the same property owner. So the same property owner would have to give access to him or herself for access to their property. That will not be a matter for the.
Not a matter for us, but a matter for general knowledge, is you, a separate piece of property must have ingress egress.
I believe that's correct, sir, but that wouldn't go through the City of Fairview for that, for that qualification.
All right, but you just. You just, you can't have a piece of property sitting there that somebody, that nobody can have access to if they, if they sell it off.
If, if they sell that point seven five five acres, then at some point, there's gonna have to be a discussion of access to the purchaser for that point seven five five acres.
Okay.
Moving to new business, item four, PC Resolution, PC dash twenty-three dash twenty-two. Rezoning of eight ninety-one Highway ninety-six North Project. Five point six seven acres, map zero two one parcel zero four six point zero nine. Current zoning Commercial General. Proposed zoning RM eight residential multifamily. Property owner Walter and Beverly Totti. Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion for a negative recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for PC Resolution, PC twenty-three dash twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion or questions before I... Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Nay.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Nay.
And Ms. Sennard?
Aye.
Moving to new business, item five, PC Resolution, PC dash twenty-four dash twenty-two. Rezoning zero Old Nashville Road, map forty-two parcel sixty-five point zero seven. Project seven point one nine acres, map zero four two parcel zero six five point zero seven. Current zoning RS forty residential. Proposed zoning R twenty residential. Property owner Janelle Pinkerton.
Uh, before I read the staff report, I would like to make note, item six of new business, there was a typo as brought up. That should be R twenty. The staff report, as well as the resolutions, both do have, that is correct for the R twenty. Uh, that is my mistake on, uh, that is a typo for the RS fifteen.
The current or proposed is R twenty?
Proposed. Current is RS forty, proposed is R twenty. So both of these projects are current, RS forty, proposed R twenty.
Thank you.
Uh, staff report, PC twenty-four dash twenty-two, PC twenty-five dash twenty-two. Uh, for the Old Nashville Road Project, map forty-two parcel sixty-five point oh seven and sixty-five point oh eight. Uh, the applicant is Tim Mangram, Innovated Construction Company. Mr. Mangram has submitted to the City of Fairview request for rezoning of the Old Nashville Road Project. The property contains fourteen point three eight acres separately in two pieces and is currently zoned RS forty residential. The applicant is requesting an R twenty residential zoning. The project is located at map forty-two parcel sixty-five point oh seven and sixty-five point oh eight, which are along Old Nashville Road between Fernville Road and Jones Lane. The properties directly surrounding this project to the south and east sides are zoned R twenty, with an additional westward property zoned RS forty residential. Uh, for the letter of intent, rezoning request to rezone the property to R twenty to allow for twenty thousand square foot lots. Uh, and the current zoning is RS forty and we're proposing an R twenty development. Uh, Mr. Mangram requested this rezoning after an adjacent three properties were recently rezoned. The requested zoning of R twenty residential fits in line with the recent rezonings. Uh, at the time, there were no requirements to submit a traffic study to the city. Uh, they are, there are no comments or conditions for approval of this project.
Thank you. You can go ahead.
I would like to address a couple of the comments from earlier. We, um, there was a petition that was brought in front of the Board of Commissioners uh, at the last rezoning to the three adjacent, um, parcels. But it's my understanding from talking to five of the people on that petition, and the, and the gentleman that started the petition, he said this in the meeting as well, he sold that as our intent was to do duplexes. That's not our intent. Uh, we brought a conceptual plan, very early in the conceptual plan stage, for the other three tracks. These two tracks, item five and six, was not available to buy at the time. The seller, Ms. Pinkerton, ended up, uh, calling me, her, she was a good one. Her, I'm gonna give you a little bit of history real quick. Her parents brought this property sometime in the thirties or forties. Uh, when she found out her sisters and brothers sold the three other tracks, she called me and, and I went to her home and, and met with her and sat down, talked to her. She said, you know, this was my, my dad's farm. And I would love to see this farm kept together as a whole. Whether it be in a development or however it be, I just think it needs, she said, I think it needs to be kept together. We feel like this meets the land use plan. It's in, it's in a great location. I can't remember some of the other comments, but I would address them if I could remember. If somebody else remembers or got questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Just for public knowledge and clarification, what will happen if this gets rezoned and then he has to come back with a master plan that has to get approved? So if he was to come back with duplexes, this board would have a comment on that.
If the plan comes back as a single-family development, uh, it will not come back as a master development plan because it would be single-family dwellings. It would come as a site plan with commercial drawings and that would, or it's not commercial, uh, construction drawings, and that would go through with a single vote. If it is proposed to come through as a duplex dwelling subdivision, it would then be part of a master development plan and that would come before the board as a master plan and then as site plans. So it would be heard twice here at this board.
Thank you.
Do we, do we have a motion?
There is no motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Any additional questions or discussion?
How many, how many units, how many lots did you say you were going on this?
Well, the, the three previous tracks that's, that's already been rezoned, I, I don't have the conceptual with me. I think there was twenty-four on that twenty-one acres. So if we combined these two tracks to those three to have a total of five, we're looking in the mid forties, and I, I don't have a conceptual on that. That's total, not just on these tracks. That's the total of the five tracks. Uh, but I don't have that conceptual yet. The engineer, I was hopeful to have it for tonight, but he didn't get it to me.
So the five, what's the total acreage of the five?
Thirty-five.
Does that level of development require a traffic study to the roads that will be impacted, or no?
It'll depend on the number of dwelling units and then what the true generation is. Thousand in the day, it would, it would-
How does it fit the master plan?
For what it's worth, the north half of the lot is considered transition corridor and the southern half is considered legacy neighborhood. Uh, the legacy section, the southern half, R twenty fits perfectly, not an issue. Um, single-family detached residential is appropriate land use. Um, the transition corridor to the north, that would only allow RS forty or some other new district that we haven't created yet. But appropriate land use is still single-family detached residential. So if we treat it as legacy residential and not transition corridor, there's not an issue with the plan.
And, Mr. Mangram, remind me, I think last time you spoke on trying to, there's a swell through there and trying to repack, so like really the north section may not actually get development on it as much.
The lot that's highlighted currently, there's approximately an acre of that on the north side that we will not be able to use. That will be left as it sits.
When you say north side, is that as close to Fairview Boulevard? Or is there more, will there be, is it in the middle?
It's what's adjoining, uh, Fairview Boulevard.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Ah.
And Ms. Sennard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving to new business, item six, PC Resolution, PC dash twenty-five dash twenty-two. Rezoning zero Old Nashville Road, map twenty forty-two parcel sixty-five point oh eight. Project seven point one nine acres, map zero four two parcel zero six five point oh eight. Current zoning RS forty residential. Proposed zoning R twenty residential. Property owner Estate of Charlene Zoit? Zoit? Zoot, sorry.
This parcel is very similar to the one that was item five. It's got approximately an acre of it on the northern part that we will not be able to use.
Nearly identical to the situation for item number five.
I'll make a motion to approve, open discussion.
Second.
Any additional questions or questions, sorry?
Yeah, just the one, uh, the, the two, uh, northern ends of both those parcels go into a, a culvert or ditch.
Yeah, so this one, this one here is roughly about where there's a big culvert that goes under one hundred there that carries a, a fairly large volume of water in extreme rain events. That, um, the heavily wooded area that cuts up through those, that's actually the heads of the Brush Creek. So we will not be impacting those at all.
Is there a spring to it, or just a?
It's actually flood plain.
Actually flood plain, okay.
Any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Sennard?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
And Mr. Anderson?
Ah.
Thank you.
Moving to new business, item seven, PC Resolution, PC twenty-six dash twenty-two. Rezoning zero Highway ninety-six, map twenty-two parcel one seventy-eight. Project six point eight six acres, map zero twenty-two parcel one seventy-eight. Current zoning RSM forty residential mobile home. Proposed zoning RM eight residential multifamily. Property owner Rick Neighbors.
The staff report for PC twenty-six dash twenty-two is for the project of zero Highway ninety-six, map twenty-two parcel one seventy-eight. Uh, it is a rezoning brought by the applicant, Mr. Tim Mangram with Innovated Construction. Uh, Mr. Mangram has submitted to the City of Fairview request for rezoning of the project. The property contains six point eight six acres and is currently zoned RSM forty residential. The applicant is requesting an RM eight residential multifamily zoning. This project is located map twenty-two parcel one seventy-eight point oh two, which fronts Highway ninety-six north between Lake Road and Tiger Trail. The properties directly surrounding this project to the south and west sides are zoned RSM forty residential. The property to the northwest is zoned RS forty residential. And the adjacent property to the north is zoned CG Commercial General, uh, with the additional eastward property zoned RS forty residential. Uh, letter of intent, this rezoning request is to change the zoning from a mobile home park to RM eight to allow for town, townhomes. Uh, there was no requirement at the time for a traffic impact study to the city. Uh, again, there are no comments or no conditions for this approval.
The mobile home park been established in that facility, or is it still just?
No, it's just vacant land, it's to zone for a, for a mobile home park. So what we're asking for here, if you look at your current zoning ordinance, um, Article six, Section one fourteen, it says you gotta have a minimum of five acres, which this is, for a mobile home park. And then the lots have to be a minimum of, of five thousand square feet. So if you do the math, that's about eight to an acre. So we're really not wanting anything more dense, we're just looking for a different product.
Mr. Sullivan, would you find, and maybe Mr. Mangram, I, I'm a little confused on the staff report because the letter of intent says there's a rezoning quest, the rezoning request is to change zoning from a mobile home park to RM eight to allow for townhomes? But then, right underneath that, the reason for proposed rezoning is to allow for an office building and storage unit complex. So is it townhomes or an office building and storage unit complex?
It's townhomes. So the, the small parcel just to the north, which is roughly two acres, it's zoned CG. Uh, that would be part of the development. And then the one that says Lake Road, uh, in red, that's four point three five acres there. So these three tracks would all, our intent would be to develop all three of these tracks as one.
Thanks for clarifying that.
I think that answers one of the questions I had. And looking at the, the southernmost lot, based on the orientation of this map, there would be a very narrow in and out on that, right? There're gonna be only one way in, one way out?
No, it's actually two ways in. Uh, it's got a fifty-foot right away that connects to Lake Road as well. So, I mean, we're not totally opposed to the mobile home park, um, to use the current zoning. We just have a little different product we'd like to build there.
I, the reason I ask that is my concern was just to, like, emergency vehicles getting in and out if there was only the one entrance and exit. But now that you mentioned that the other two lots are also gonna be involved in this, that would change things, but-
Yeah, with all three of those, we'd like to think there's maybe two entrance points on, uh, ninety-six and one on Lake Road. But of course, that's a state highway, so T-Dot will have a lot of influence on whether we get one entrance or two.
To steal someone's thunder, uh, this is in the transition corridor, but it's the same thing we talked about. I believe it was last month or the month before with another, one of your properties that's actually pictured in there, um, that was going the RM twelve designation, um, that most in this area don't currently fit it and would never fit that transition corridor designation.
I don't think, I don't think the current zoning-
No, and, and, yeah, to your point.
My intent was to beat, beat Mr. Jenkins to that it don't fit the plan, but I slipped my mind, so sorry.
No, no, eh, to, to your point, eh, we're in a very similar situation as we were to the first four items on the agenda tonight, where the current zoning does not match our twenty forty comprehensive plan, it just doesn't. There's nothing in our comprehensive plan that I found for mobile home parks. However, neither does RM eight zoning align with legacy residential or transition corridor. So, once again, we're stuck between what is, which isn't something we want, and what is being proposed, which isn't something we've planned for either.
I found it to be a good example of, you know, you can set out with the best of intentions, but mistakes are always gonna be made. And when you look at our future zoning map that we have put together, it gives us a great guide. But I think at times, there's certain areas that did not receive as much attention as they should have when deciding what future zoning that was gonna receive. And I think this property, much like the first one that we talked about tonight, is great examples to that little situation. So that being said, personally, I would much rather see townhomes there, since I drive that road every day, than a mobile home park. But that's my own personal opinion.
Is there a motion?
What it's worth, though, a mobile home park has a whole lot less infrastructure involved than a, a set of townhomes. So if someone wanted to come through after Mr. Mangram purchased that property, they wouldn't have anything they have to tear down. You just drive them out of there.
No, we, we had to put, we'd had to put roads in.
Yeah, but, no buildings.
Where are we? Do we have a motion?
I do not believe we have a motion.
Second.
Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Ah.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Sorry, did you not second? Okay, sorry. Mr. Jenkins?
No.
Mr. Callie?
No.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
And Ms. Sennard? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving to item eight, PC Resolution PC dash twenty-seven dash twenty-two, master development plan, Adams Circle Townhomes Project, forty-nine attached dwellings on seven point five-two acres, map zero four-two parcel zero-three-four, property owner, estate of Conrad Totti.
Staff report for PC twenty-seven dash twenty-two, which is the Adams Circle Townhouse Project, this is a master development plan, so you will see this project again before construction. This gives the overall appearance, and then we will see construction plans soon after. It is on map forty-two parcel thirty-four. Pulte Homes Inc. has submitted to City of Fairview a request for master development plan, approval of the Adams Circle Townhome Project. The property contains seven point five-two acres and is zoned commercial general. This project is located at map forty-two parcel thirty-four and is nearest to the intersection of Highway one hundred and Adams Circle. The property is adjacent to this project on the southern side or zoned commercial general, east side R twenty residential, and western side RM twelve multifamily residential. The letter of intent is to develop a forty-nine multifamily attached units. The project property has been reviewed by staff and meets the base bulk zoning and area requirements of the RM eight residential multifamily regulations for use in the CG Commercial General District. The setbacks and buffers are shown. Pulte's Homes, the Adams Circle Townhouse Project, is proposing ingress egress to the project by means of one access point from Adams Circle. Additional right-of-way will be dedicated, as shown on the master development plan, as Hazelwood Lane. Hazelwood Lane is proposed to be constructed as a twenty-four-foot paved roadway with curb and gutter, and will provide a cul-de-sac at the terminus. Right-of-way, as shown on the master development plan, will be required to be dedicated prior to the pre-construction meeting and approval of the site plan. Roadways, as shown in the master development plan, shall meet the City of Fairview standards for said road profiles. All internal dedicated roads will have a five-foot minimum sidewalk on each side of the road with landscaping to follow City of Fairview standards. Pulte Homes Inc. has required, was required to submit a traffic impact study for the Adams Circle Townhouse Project. Pulte Homes submitted a traffic impact study dated March second, twenty-twenty-two by Kim Lee Horn. It concluded that no transportation improvements are proposed to be implemented as part of this project, and recommend the following for intersection of Fairview Boulevard at Adams. There we go. I flipped the page and it wasn't there. To provide additional signing and striping of Fairview Boulevard to direct westbound traffic to merge into the inside lane, install a median acceleration pocket lane on the eastern leg of the intersection to improve southbound left turn operations, and to provide updated signage, striping, and turn lane improvements along Highway one hundred, as shown in figures ten and eleven off the traffic study. A plan sheet has been provided showing the location, dimension, and design of all roadways, driveways, entrances, sidewalks, parking, loading areas, refuse collection areas, mailbox delivery kiosks, streetlights, access, and other pertinent surface items, and meet the requirements of each item. The site will have one hundred three off-street parking spaces, that includes garage parking exceeding the required number of ninety-eight parking spaces. Each dwelling unit will contain one garage parking per unit and one driveway parking space, meeting the two parking space requirements per unit. A total of four standard and one handicap space is provided in the area of the mail kiosk for residents and visitors. A plan set has been provided showing existing man-made site features, including fences, walls, structures, buildings, pavement, cemeteries, archeological features, above-and-below grade utilities, hydrants, and roadway infrastructure, as well as natural features, including topography, tree canopy, sinkholes, hydrologic features, and all associated buffers. The calculations of natural features and proposed landscaping components are as follows: a ten percent required open space, and there's a forty-two percent provided; a usable open space of five percent with nine point five-seven provided; streetscape landscaping required forty trees with forty trees provided; transitional landscaping, evergreen trees, one foot, or one tree per ten linear feet of screen, which is twenty-five northern trees and sixty-one eastern trees; and then the amenities are walking trails and playgrounds, as shown in the master development plan. The following staff comments will be included in the Planning Commission Resolution PC twenty-seven twenty-two. Staff comments regarding specific site plan elements shall be addressed with future site plan applications. City staff makes a positive recommendation for the Adams Circle Townhouse Project, Townhome Projects to, subject to staff comments being met. And then the additional condition of approval is approval of development plan shall be valid for three years from the date of planning commission approval. Any modification to the approved plans shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in planning commission reconsideration. And that's the end of that.
Discussion, motion, anybody?
So just like the last one, a question of just looking at the setup of the in and out, and like that hammerhead turnaround there at the top, I would feel like emergency vehicles would struggle with that situation? That's, maybe I'm wrong. And then also something to think about there is just if that road, Adams Road, if you go, if you were coming down and went right away from Fairview Boulevard, you're gonna, that's an interesting way to go that direction, and if you go towards Fairview Boulevard and you're going anywhere other than right, taking a left there, you're crossing several lanes, and it's just a weird intersection. So is there any comments regarding that, those two situations?
I'll address the first one, I'll let Kevin take the second one. There was a circulation plan presented to both planning, well, planning engineering and the fire department for site circulation. The ladder truck for the fire department is what is used, and that hammerhead was designed for that truck. It will be striped and painted for no parking, and that will be emergency use only.
As far as the access, we, part of the traffic study was that we asked the consultant to analyze one hundred and look at that and come up with some improvements for that. And with that is, is some striping, there's quite a bit of additional pavement that's available out there on one hundred that could be potentially restripped. Coming off of ninety-six toward city center, there is a merge lane that comes off of ninety-six. Using that additional pavement with that merge lane, and maybe just a little bit more from there down, would then provide an, an extra width for a right turn lane to get in and out of there. One of the other suggestions was to make a median cut in the median going toward Nashville out of Adams Circle, and provide kind of a, a, a storage bay, if you want to call it that, a refuge area for left turn traffic, for them to be able to sit, wait, and then be able to proceed toward Nashville on one hundred, so.
Does an Adams Drive run into, I'm calling it Adams Drive, is Adams Circle and Adams Drive the same, one of the same?
Yes, Adams Drive, Adams Circle becomes, turns into Adams Drive. So if you go, if you're looking at the screen and you go northwest, it tees into Adams Drive, which then goes south and tees into Cox Pike.
Which then comes out of the traffic light?
Yes, west of the traffic signal.
Okay.
Um, I had two different concerns, one that kind of tees up to this conversation. They make it all sound well and good with the hundred and three spots, but that's effectively two spots a unit, including their garage, so like if they had a child driving or a guest coming over, people start parking on this only twenty-eight foot wide street, and contrary to what's legal in that hammerhead. Is there no, other than at the mailbox, plan for any other parking, or requirement for any other parking?
The requirements for developments such as this are two spots, and our regulations allow the garage to be considered one of those spots. So there, yeah, it may be up to the applicant to add more spaces if that's something they would wish to do, and that's something that could definitely be discussed here, but as far as base requirements, and that's what our code is, it's just a base requirement. For that base, it is two spots, one which can be the garage.
And my other concern was the grading, it just seems, I mean, I see the detention, I see, it just seems extreme, and like we're just going to pour water into some of those garages.
As far as the grading goes, there's a second sheet or a third sheet in the plan set, maybe sheet five that kind of shows the site slopes. One of the things that we worked with the applicant on, on that is breaking up some of that eastern slope, the steeper slope with the runoff there, and providing a swell that runs along the northern, kind of the northeastern property leg into the, into the proposed detention pond. That was kind of a, a discussion between, between staff and the applicant of, hey, let's figure out a way to break this up so that you don't have, the wa, give the water a chance from going from west to east, that's the way the water's flowing on, on the, on the plan sheet, when it's constructed, the way it's shown, and, and giving the water a place to be intercepted before it leaves the property, and then it gives it a chance to get treated in the pond. So that's something that we worked with as staff with, with the applicant.
And I'm seeing no critical lots, even though I see the indication of a star. Okay, just make sure. If you'll state your name, you're welcome to address questions and state.
Yeah, I'm, my name's Ryan Awail Padiya. I was the traffic consultant, the engineer who prepared the TIA. I just wanted to provide a little more information on the recommendations that were mentioned before, the, for the turn lane concepts. It was a part, figures ten and eleven is part of the traffic study. During the scoping meeting with the city, those same concerns that you brought up, Mr. McDonald, about just awkward intersection there at Adams and Nashville Highway, or Fairview Boulevard, excuse me. And so we went through the exercise to evaluate opportunities to improve turning movements and kind of basically the, what Kevin had outlined earlier. And the, with those improvements, that there are potential improvements that can ultimately, you know, improve operations at this intersection, but they're beyond, they're basically just beyond the capabilities of this one single development. That improvements of this scope isn't really something that this one development could take on. So we, it's intended as, provided as information as part of the traffic study, but not something that this development can take on as a, as part of the project.
What about the parking concern? Who's handling that discussion?
If you'll just state your name again for the record, sorry.
Rob Mulchon, SEC. Regards to the parking, we were meeting the requirements that the city has in its place at this point in time, regards to the two spaces per unit on that, so we're meeting that, plus we're finding a couple extra additional spaces for the kiosk and/or guest parking at this point, we are meeting and slightly exceeding the requirements that the city has in place at this time.
Thank you.
If I could go back to the slope conversation, looking at that map, that's kind of a heat map, shows different colors of different grades, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but looking at this, almost every single one of these units, when you come out the back of them, on either side, you're going to have greater than twenty percent slope? Is that accurate?
Good evening.
Get your name and then you can.
My name is Ousah Madam, with SEC. Excuse me, the applicant, so are we talking about the proposed slopes or the existing slopes?
I, I'm not sure, I'm guessing this is your document, the one that's.
C zero point four.
So in regards to the proposed slopes, all the red, the red hatches are proposed slopes, and they're a maximum thirty-three point three percent, basically three to one slopes, and they are allowed by the city regulations. They will be stabilized with erosion control matting, and we will be following T-Deck requirements to prevent erosion.
I guess, and this doesn't necessarily for you to respond to, but do we not, as a city, state that natural slopes greater than twenty percent are no longer to be built on?
Natural slopes.
So man-made slopes are?
A man-made slope can follow a three to one, according to, at the time, previous ratable areas, yes.
Okay, and then I guess to follow up for a question for you, is there, you said matting and erosion mitigation, but is there anything that you are putting there as far as shrubs or a fence or anything? Because some of those areas are wider than others. Some of them are narrow, thirty percent grade for a couple feet, but some of them are wider, and if that ends up being what is, ends up being the final product, seems like an issue.
The area between units one through twenty-seven, that's a ditch to bypass the flow, so this is really just a foot and a half deep ditch to bypass the offside flow and carry it away from the units, and all the stormwater will be routed to the pond. The slope in the back of lots, twenty-eight through forty-nine, will be captured through a ditch, and this ditch will drain to the pond. The pond is sized to handle the fifty-year frequent storm event, and will basically produce the flow up to the hundred year, and this area, it is, to my understanding, it's a flooding, it has flooding ish, sorry, existing flooding issues. This development is going to improve the situation, as we will be detaining the flow and not release more water than the existing, up to the hundred year.
I appreciate that. I, I, more so, I mean, I'm sure there's going to be questions about runoff, but it was more of a safety concern for me in the areas that would have a larger slope, walking out your backyard, kids, elderly. I don't know how deep that goes, especially the numbers that you mentioned, the top right.
Twenty.
Forty-eight.
Yeah, twenty-eight through something.
The back of each unit has a five-foot bench, it's a walkable area, so anyone can access the back of the units easily from the front. After the five feet, we will have a thirty-three percent slope, it's allowed by the city, also it's immovable, like anyone can drive a lawn mower on it. So it is an acceptable slope, and we see it all the time on roads, commercial and residential developments.
So no, there will not be any fencing or shrubs or anything?
We are, we are proposing trees along the back of each units as a buffer, if that's going to consider, I don't know if that's going to consider a safety measure, but there are no fences.
Mr. Blackburn, would you mind just educating me on what Mr. McDonald brought up earlier? So natural slopes greater than twenty degrees, we no longer let people build on, but they can manufacture a twenty-degree slope, and it's totally fine. So what's the difference between the two?
So the, the way I read and understand the intent of the original code for natural slopes, it was to maintain existing slopes and not disturb steeper slopes to, to maintain stream buffers, hillside development standards, soils, runoff potential, trees, things like that. So I thought, the way I read the intent of that is that, that that was put in place to reduce slightly the development density that's allowed for different types of development based on existing slopes with, just to try to preserve some of the natural topography of the area.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, can you clarify one more time? We talked about what this is, and that it has to come back one more time, and, and what next time we would be able to speak to versus this time?
Uh, this is the master plan, so it shows full development. A lot of times that is used, if it's a phased development, it all comes in at once. This will not be a phased development, it will be basically this same plan with more details brought before you the next time. We have seen that plan, and it's almost a mirror of this, but with more details. And that would be what would be used for construction once it's voted upon.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone's clear. Is there a second? Motion dies, correct?
If there's no second, the motion dies for lack of a second.
Is there any additional motions?
Due to the slope concerns, the spaces, the parking spaces, meeting just the minimum standards, which is fine, that's why it's a standard, the turnaround stuff, the fact that it's this, when you're. The turnaround stuff, the fact that it's this, when you, imagine you're driving right up here on Fairview Boulevard and you're coming up to the Cox Pike red light and you look at Sonic Drive in on the right, or Drive Through on the right-hand side and all you see are the backsides of these townhomes and this huge 20, you know, 33-degree slope. I, I just, I don't know. It doesn't sit well with me. And for that reason, I'd like to make a negative recommendation to the board of commissioners.
Let me comment, question. Did they comply to all the requirements of the city of Fairview, Tennessee?
As for the review, from what we can tell, this site has complied with our regulations.
So therefore, if we have a negative vote on this project, it's because of the desires of this board, not because of the rules and regulations that the city has put in place. Is that correct?
From our review.
I think it's a yes or no question.
From our review, they've met all of the requirements of our code.
All right, I'll rescind my motion.
This cannot understand how you can sit here and just because you don't like it, it's in the books. I don't like the 30% slope either, but these people came forward, they read the regs, they read the instructions and then came up and presented a plan within those guidelines. They didn't ask for one variance. And then we sit here and decide to build a better box. We build a box before we ask them to bring their plans to us and then they build within that box. And I think it's ridiculous. That's my statement.
I don't know if you caught that, but I rescinded my motion earlier.
You rescind your motion? Any additional motions? Is the original motion still on the table?
The original motion, the motion's been withdrawn, there is no motion before the board. Any member can make a motion anytime, sir.
Second. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
And Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to new item number nine, PC Resolution PC 28-22. Site plan, Richville Estates subdivision, phase three, 11 building lots on 6.03 acres. Map 043, parcel 023, current zoning R20, residential property owner GH Tennessee LLC.
The staff report for PC 28-22 is a residential site plan for phase three of the Richville Estates project. The applicant is GH Tennessee LLC. GH Tennessee, GH Tennessee LLC has submitted to the city a fairview request for residential site plan approval of the Richville Estates subdivision, phase three project. The property contains 6.23 acres and is zoned R20. This project is located at map 43, parcel 23, which is the new phase of the Richville Estates subdivision nearest to the intersection of Cox Pike and Hall Lane. The property is adjacent to this project or zone RS40 residential. The letter of intent is to develop 11 lots. The following staff comments will be included in the Planning Commission Resolution PC 28-22. Fire hydrants shall meet NFPA standards for color and height. The plan set is to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting, provide documentation of all applicable state and federal permits prior to pre-construction meeting. The conditions of approval for the Richville Estates subdivision, phase three project, approval of development plan shall be valid for three years from the date of planning commission approval. Any modification of the approved plan shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in planning commission reconsideration. Five sets of full-size plans shall be provided to the city prior to the pre-construction meeting. That concludes the staff report.
Any motion or discussion?
I'll make a motion to open it for discussion.
Is there an applicant here to speak on it? Please state your name again, just for the record.
Good evening again, Aous Ahmed with SEC, the client. Basically, this is part of the approved master plan for Richville Estates. We are just seeking the approval of these 11 lots for site plan construction. We are aware of the staff comments, we will be seeking to obtain the state permits and meet all the conditions of approval, basically. We are seeking the approval and thank you so much.
Motion to approve PC Resolution 28-22.
Any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
And Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving to new item 10, PC Resolution PC-29-22. Final plat, Richville Estates subdivision, phase three, 11 building lots on 6.03 acres. Map 043, parcel 023, current zoning R20, residential property owner GH Tennessee LLC.
Staff report for PC 29-22, it is the final plat for Richville Estates subdivision, phase three. GH Tennessee LLC has submitted to the city a request for final plat approval of Richville Estates subdivision, phase three project. Property contains 6.23 acres and is zoned R20. This is the same property that was before us on the previous one. The following staff comments will be included in the Planning Commission Resolution PC 29-22. Revised final plat to provide plat book and page number and the homeowners association documents once they're recorded with Williamson County. An as-built survey is required for review and approval prior to signing a final plat and the plat is to be approved by all utility providers prior to signing of the final plat. Conditions of approval for the Richville Estates subdivision, phase three final plat, a performance surety shall stay in place with the city of Fairview up until a time of infrastructure acceptance. At the time of infrastructure acceptance, the applicant shall provide a maintenance surety for one year. Approval of the final plat shall be valid for filing for one year from the date of planning commission approval. Any modification to the approved plat shall be submitted to the city for review and may result in planning commission reconsideration.
I'd like to ask for clarification.
Yes, sir.
I've been asked several times in the past two months, I think we've talked about this before, when you approve the final plat and you get the as-built signed off, it is signed off for each and every footprint or lot, not just for the site of the whole subdivision. So you are guaranteeing that the drainage on each lot complies with the original site plan that was submitted, no matter if they sold a lot to another individual or the developer did the whole project. Am I correct?
At the final plat? No, sir. At the final plat, we are looking at road improvements and storm. We are moving into looking at lot grading for that. Previously, that has not been a requirement on plan sets for construction plans. We do have an as-built that is required prior to final acceptance, but that is after the final road topping is put on. So we have moved the as-built to be provided earlier so that we can look into the site grading at the time of plat and then again at the time of final. So to answer your question, yes and no. Historically, we have not been doing that. Moving forward, we are, and this is, I believe we've done that on the last three plats where we've worked to get the final, or to get the as-built earlier, but historically, that has not been the case.
You, when you're referring to the as-bills, you're also including the footprint of each individual lot. So there cannot be one lot that failed to comply with the drainage that would cause problems for everyone else as it has in the past.
We are including on the site plan requirements that they provide a as-built of all lot grading that is only as good as the site plans and the plat at that time.
I think, I don't think that answers the question. I understand your explanation, but the answer to the question is no, sir.
You do not?
The final plat is simply effectively the map that states where those lots and infrastructure will be. It does not include individual liabilities from lot to lot.
Okay, but it, let's just pass off the final plat and then go to, when the subdivision or each individual lot at the end of the day is accepted and signed off and a bond is released, at that point, who and are you, question is who and are you guaranteeing that the drainage plan is correct for the entire subdivision, but for each individual lot as well?
So we're doing two things going forward. The first is on the acceptance of the infrastructure, we would accept, inspect the infrastructure and make sure it is built per standard before we accept it. That will be issue number one. Secondly, going forward, we are, we have already approved of the documentations that provide the requirement for lot-by-lot grading plans before, we do pre and post. So on a lot-by-lot basis, we do a grading plan inspection prior to any work being done on that lot and then construction plan adherence to that at the time of CO.
I had stuck my neck out and said you were doing what you said and I used the wrong phrase and I apologize.
No, but you're correct in the, in, in the theory, yes, sir, you're correct.
Okay, cause a lot of people are really upset over past history. We can't do anything about past history, but we can go forward and I've said that you're doing it correctly.
Yes, sir.
And I didn't want to have to eat crow.
No, sir, you're correct.
Make a motion to approve PC 29-22.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion or comments?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
And Ms. Sinyard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
There are no bonds and letters of credit. Moving to reports from city staff, city planning, Mr. Sullivan?
Tonight, I don't have anything. If anybody has any questions for me, if I can do this real quick, I need to run. If anybody has any questions, one, once, twice, thank you and see y'all next month.
City manager, Mr. Collins?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Blackburn?
Just, I guess a quick update on the stormwater ordinance that was updated. So that is passed at the, at the end of March. So moving forward, all plans that will have to follow that new regulation. So I've submitted that out to all the applicants that are on our electronic plan system. So everyone should have a copy of that now. So moving forward, just working with engineers, developers on understanding those regulations and hopefully that'll help move us in the right direction. That's all I have.
Okay, moving to communication from Planning Commission. Mr. Kelly?
Nothing tonight. You did a good job.
Ms. Rainey?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
No, she has done an outstanding job. It's serious business and I want everybody to realize that a lot of money is put forward to try to make this town a better place. And if we've got, if we ask them to comply at the rules and regulations and they try, I think it's our obligation to, to honor what we've asked people to do in advance.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, I've got a quick question. Are all of our emails and contact information on the city website? I would imagine they are, right? So I just wanted to take an opportunity, I think he's left, there was a citizen earlier that said that he does not feel there's enough back and forth or communication between the two sides. So I just want to encourage him and anyone else, all of our contact information is on the city website and I would be happy, as I'm sure every one of us would be, to have a less formal conversation about why we feel the way we do or decisions we made or anything like that, answer questions, to just call out that we're not trying. I mean, we're open, we just have never been approached, so that's all.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, to Mr. Anderson's point earlier, like absolutely, I, I actually really appreciate your impassioned delivery and the fact that you, you corrected us, and in my opinion, you corrected us. So thanks for doing that, seriously, means a lot. I don't think I have anything else tonight. Next meeting, do we have a workshop ahead of it or is it just strictly seven o'clock? Okay, thank you, sir.
Ms. Shulis?
Nothing for me.
And I would love to investigate adding more parking spots to our requirement. I think that makes a challenging community and just cause it's the baseline. I stand with him that it is what we, we've got to set requirements and then approve them, but that doesn't mean that that's the kind of development we want here.
I totally agree with you.
So I'd love to investigate what that means as we're going through some of these standards.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.